This conference will now be recorded.
The full Board of Selectmen is present. Item three on the agenda is here from the public.
Hi Bill, it's Joan Bowley.
Good evening, Joan.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good. I have a question about the pertaining to the American Rescue Plan, the potentials for the project funding.
Yeah.
Were all of these projects listed, taken from the online survey request, or were they called in, or how were they done, or do you know?
The items that you see on the list, item eight E, under eight E, are a combination of things that the Board of Selectmen have been discussing, but it is more or less a wish list. Those things at this point are not carved in stone, but it's a compilation of things that we have been discussing for months, and also items that we did get some suggestions through the general public through our efforts in the citizen and word of mouth that we thought were of note to put in there in that list. But that list that you see on the agenda is not carved in stone at this time.
Okay, I was just wondering, because in your minutes under, your minutes of January 3rd, under seven, no, I'm sorry, eight F, the comment that was made about me seemed that most of these were done by survey and they weren't done by people calling in like we did, or other people. I don't know, Bill, I'm just asking a question. So it's a conglomerate of things, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll talk on other ones. Thank you, I won't keep you.
No problem. Just a housekeeping situation here.
Bill, would you?
Thank you, pardon? Did somebody say something? Just a housekeeping situation here. I noticed there's some people that were unable to identify. I've got a Mary. Mary, do you want to give us your last name? You may be muted. Okay, the only issue is if you do not identify yourself, we cannot take public comment from you then.
Bill, Mary is my wife, Mary Maritko.
Okay.
She's having some problems with her microphone, so.
Steve, that's fine, as long as we know who it is, we're fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also have somebody identified, his caller O2. Can you identify yourself?
Claudia Urson, Bill.
Claudia?
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chris, is that all you needed? Is that August Pacenti? August, you're muted. Okay, well, we're going to proceed. We'll consider August just a listener then. Anybody else from the public to be heard? Okay. Yes?
This is Melissa Coyle, I am here with Claudia Urson, I am her daughter.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
And I'm Chris Coyle, son-in-law of Melissa, married to, married to Melissa's son-in-law Claudia, sorry.
They will be joining us this evening, Bill.
Okay.
Thanks.
Would you just give those names again?
Melissa Coyle, C-O-Y-L-E, and Chris Coyle, C-O-Y-L-E. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that may want to be heard that is online with somebody else? Okay, I want to proceed. Selectmen's briefing, I'll be as brief as I can. No hunting signs will be posted on the former wagon shade property in addition to the signs that we've already posted of no trespassing. Signs have been ordered and should be up by the end of the week. In another excellent team effort, we dispersed approximately 510 COVID test kits to town residents. Recipients included those that were determined to be immune compromised, showing symptoms, exposed, seniors. We left some kits with the senior center, with the senior housing, to all four of our churches and to town staff. Most kits were hand-delivered outside the town office building to people who would call up when they arrived here, and we would hand-deliver them to them. Masks were also given out. We've also had some questions because there's been an article on Channel 6, Fox News, that some of the lot numbers had expired, and Mike Gardner, our emergency management director, is checking that out. There seems to be some confusing, confusion by our partners with the state, so we'll get clarification on that. We do have, that was the lot that was delivered to us in the first delivery, and we have got subsequent deliveries that have lot numbers that are not in question. Boxes of masks were also distributed to many of our businesses along with a statement from our Eastern Highland Health District of January 5th. COVID cases continue to be on the rise in the area. School positivity rates have taken a major drop in the last 10 days, down to single digits, although I was not able to get today's numbers. But they went last week from the high teens and early twenties to last Friday down to two. So we're hoping that that's a good trend. State positivity rates, with the exception of today, have been dropping, and I'm told that today's were a bit skewed because there were no rates that were published yesterday. And we're monitoring that very closely. I'd like to commend Public Works for doing an excellent job during the several storms we've had so far this month. All equipment is up and running, and all of our staff is back to work. I'd also like to thank the Town Clerk's Office for the beautiful Christmas and Valentine's displays that they put in our main lobby here at the town office building. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to item five, acceptance of the minutes of January 3rd. Do I have a motion?
I sent a correction in. Chris, did you get it?
I saw, why don't we have a motion and
a second discussion for corrections? Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Discussion, Catherine.
Yeah, where we appointed, bear with me. We, one of our sets of appointments, Housing Commission, they were actually two separate motions. Both of them were made, initiated by me and seconded by Roger, and they were passed unanimously. The minutes just need to be corrected to reflect that.
Thanks, Catherine. Roger, anything?
All good.
Hearing no further discussion, I will move the motion with the corrections as noted by Catherine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Here from Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Departments.
Mr. Filetti, this is Luther Brauch, if you can hear me, I'm from the Ashford Agricultural Commission.
I'm hearing you fine, Luther.
Hi, good evening, folks. I just wanted to take an opportunity to speak briefly. Our most recent communication with the Town Clerk's Office regarding our changes in membership and elected officials seems to be proceeding appropriately. I noticed it wasn't on the agenda for discussion tonight with the Board of Selectmen. Hopefully, at some point here in the not-too-distant future, it will make your agenda to make the adjustments as requested. But in the interim, I'm serving as Chairperson-elect. We're joined tonight by Art Talmage, our current or legacy chairperson. So we're able to speak to your new business, item number eight C, the consideration of ordinance request received from the Agricultural Commission. Hopefully, we're able to address that adequately. We weren't really given a formal request from the Selectmen's Office to participate tonight, but it's my belief that we'll be able to answer any questions that may arise. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Luther, I believe by putting it on our agenda, we open it up for discussion when we get to that item.
Okay, we just weren't notified that it was on the agenda at all, but fortunately, we were able to catch it.
Okay. Any other comments from any Boards, Commissions, Departments?
Actually, I would like to. Bill, this is Catherine.
Go ahead, Catherine.
If I understand correctly, at this point in time, Art Talmage is still the Chair of the Agricultural Commission. And there is no movement, other than the two people have given their resignations. And there are, that particular committee or commission would be making a recommendation, I believe in writing, to the Board of Selectmen as to who they would like to bring on the board, and what kind, how they want to change the membership. So until then, the membership is not changed, except for the fact that there two people have resigned.
I can speak to that. I was, I sent an email that went into great detail about the changes that were voted on at our last meeting at the Agricultural Commission. I'm Art Talmage, I'm the current chairman.
Okay.
Sent an email, it has to be in writing? I see some head shaking, I'm just.
What you need to understand, if I have it correct, and I did talk with the Town Clerk and others, is that the Board of Selectmen does the appointments on the board, on the commission. That includes appointments to full membership and appointments as alternates. And that's in the ordinance. It's very specifically stated.
So I sent an email in outlining the proposed changes, we'll put it that way, acceptance of the resignations of the two members who resigned, and their replacements, the replacement for Colf Falsgraf, and the changes in our structure, President, Chairman and Vice Chairman. So we're still under, we understand that we're operating under the old system, as me is still acting chairman. And so I guess we're just asking that when the request will be put on the Board of Selectmen agenda, I guess. So we understand that it's a request, right? We decided what we would request of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Yes.
Probably a recommendation.
We understand that.
It's a recommendation.
Probably the word recommendation would be more appropriate.
Correct.
Okay, so.
The Agricultural Commission is recommending so-and-so and so-and-so to fill whatever vacancies and everything, and then it's taken up by the Board of Selectmen, and that, that particular item and those discussions you can count on will definitely be on the next Board of Selectmen agenda.
Okay, so do I need to resend the email and just put in the word we would like, we'd like to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that these changes be made?
Now, did you?
Is that how we should do it?
To the Town Clerk?
Was it sent? Was it sent to the Board of Selectmen?
I sent it to Chris. I have a call.
Is that recently?
On December 20th, I have it right here.
Okay. Chris, did you get that? You're muted.
Did I get an email from Art?
On December 20th?
December 20th, 2020, last year, 9:36 a.m. I sent it.
I will have to go back. What was the date?
December 20th.
Art, why don't you resend it and include me on it for Selectmen?
Okay, I will.
I'll take a look at it, I'll review it with Sherry. If the language is efficient, I'll verify that with you, or if we need it changed, we'll clarify that with you.
So do you need it, is an email okay, or do I need to attach a document?
Send me what you sent in, and I'll review it with the Town Clerk.
Okay. Will do.
I know a resignation has to be done in writing with a wet signature on it.
And that's all been received by the Town Clerk, Sherry.
She verified that tonight, so that's, we're all set on that part. Any other comments by Boards, Commissions, Departments? Hearing none, we'll move on to item seven, Old Business, Discuss Reopening Strategies. We continue to monitor the cases both in our town and adjoining areas. As I mentioned in my briefing, and we've got a hopeful lie that the surge is starting to turn down, but we are keeping a close eye on that. We are maintaining a mask mandate in all town buildings at this time. And we have encouraged local businesses in accordance with this statement put out on January 5th by our Health Department, to encourage all of their staff and patrons to also recognize that, and we're hoping that's cooperated with. COVID updates, I think I touched on that in my briefing. Trumpco House Review Committee. We have not received the report from Mr. Hurd yet. I called him again twice today, I called him twice last week. When I talked to him the end of December, I was told that he was going to be a few days late with that, and that I should expect it the first week in January. Catherine, Roger, you folks have any thoughts regarding this? He had a contractual obligation to get that back to us by the end of December.
Yes, I had a concern about this before because it did take him quite a while to get back to us when we were first reaching out to him prior to having the contract and getting, getting one in place. I think all we can do is wait and see what he comes back with. Has he provided us anything at all?
I have seen nothing.
Yeah. My only recommendation is the same as it was the last time, was that perhaps it would be a good idea for the people who are going to be on that committee, or who are on that committee, to get together before they receive the documentation from Mr. Hurd, so that they have, you know, kind of have gotten to know each other and have got a sense of it. And then, once they get the documentation, they can look at it as, truly as a team. But that's just a recommendation.
Well, I think there's something to it, and the more time that goes by, I think the more that makes sense. Why don't we?
May I? Bill, Joan Bowley?
Yeah, just let me finish, Joan. Why don't we? Why don't we give him to the end of the week? I will continue to pursue him. And if we don't, try to schedule something, at least an organizational meeting with the committee next week sometime. Go ahead, Joan.
I'm on that committee, and I think we all know each other pertaining to what Catherine just said. But meeting with the Board of Selectmen would be great.
I don't understand the meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I was talking about the committee, the committee getting together.
But Bill just mentioned that, about meeting with the Board?
I don't think so, Joan, I was talking about the committee, the project committee.
What do we have to talk?
I can certainly sit in as ex officio, but I believe we were just talking about the organizational committee.
Janet, I'm sorry, Joni, I know you're speaking for yourself. I didn't know if anybody else who's on that committee would be interested in getting together ahead of time. Just a thought.
I'm speaking for myself, that's correct. But my comment is, we all know each other, and what can we talk about? We have nothing to really talk about, but maybe the other two want to.
If that's your, if that's your perspective, that's fine.
That's my comment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Joan, thank you. And I'm going to, I'm going to continue to pursue him, and let's hope that by this Friday, we have some more positive feedback. And I'll report to the committee through Chris probably, and if we've, and of course, if we hear the report, you folks will get it immediately. So.
Thank you.
Be updated. Any more discussion regarding the Trumpco House? Okay, New Business, Street Lighting. I consider, I continue to pursue EverSource, and it's not heard back yet. And we'll stay on top of that. The formation of the Capital Improvements Committee. We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, and because of the lack of response, I put it off till next week this time, and we'll get a notice out.
Yeah. Bill, we haven't agreed upon who is going to be on that committee. What you showed us last week was who you recommended. We never voted on who would be on that committee.
That's correct. That's correct. I was just commenting because there was a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night that I've canceled. I just wanted to bring.
Right, but the meeting, the meeting would have been with the people that were to be on the committee. So are we going to talk about who's going to be on the committee? Could you put that up again? I haven't, because I have a recommendation.
Chris, can you comment on who we've got so far?
You, if I understand correctly, you have people that the Boards have put forth, the appropriate Boards, and that's their decision as to who they've put on. You also had a member of the community at large that you wanted to put on, you were recommending Mike Sambo.
I was.
I'd like to, I'd like to recommend Chuck Funk. Mike hasn't been as engaged over the last few years. Chuck has been in the midst of it and was on the Capital Improvement Committee for the last few years.
Chris, could you just name the names that have been recommended by the different Boards and Commissions? You're muted. I know it was Paul Varga for the Board of Finance. I believe Jim Rupert for the Building Committee from the school. Craig Crowler for the Board of Ed. I'm leaving somebody out. Public Works was Joe Kalanowski.
I think what we've always done is, certainly from the Boards, whoever they recommended, we agreed to, that was their choice. I only had the one name that I was, I'm thinking we'd have a better choice, someone a little more current.
My thought with Mike was that he did chair that committee for some six years, and sat on it before then, but I certainly have no objections to Chuck either. He did an excellent job on it, served his time well.
Yeah, I'd like to continue his involvement.
Chris, I think we've got everybody, I think I went down the list. Did I miss anybody? You're muted.
I don't think so.
Are you folks hearing her?
Nope, I'm not hearing her.
Chris, you're muted.
You're muted, you're muted, Chris.
All right, Joe Kalanowski, Tom Borkman, Paul Varga, Jim Rupert, Craig Crowler, and the member of the public.
And if, unless I'm mistaken, Catherine, you're nominating Chuck Funk?
Yes.
Roger, are you seconding that?
I'll second that.
Why don't we vote on the public seat first, and then we'll just verify all the names that we just mentioned for the entire committee? I believe I'm also on that committee.
Yes, you chair, the first Selectman chairs the committee.
Usually, yes. Any more discussions regarding, there's a nomination on the floor for Chuck to do a public-at-large representative. All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. I'm glad to have Chuck back in the realm of things. And I'll take a motion to just verify the names that we just read off as the other standing members of that Board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks. And as we stand right now, the meeting for tomorrow night is not going to try, I know I'm repeating myself, but it's not going to transpire, and will probably be next Wednesday night at 6 o'clock. Unless the majority.
I'm assuming all of the, I'm assuming all of those members will be notified.
They will be notified, and also verified they can all make the meeting. That's my only little, we'll do that before we post it.
They were sent an email this afternoon.
Okay. Item D, reappointment of municipal open burning official. I spoke to Tom Borman. I see a hand, Luther?
I'm just confirming that we skipped over C, which is the ordinance request from the Agriculture Commission.
You are absolutely right. Thank you. Item C, consideration of ordinance request received from the Agricultural Committee. Can I have comment?
I would, I would think that we would be making sure that we've got the membership sorted out before we did this. This request is from the entire commission? Or is this from, I know it was Luther that sent the request, he's an alternate.
It is from the entire commission. We've been working on this for a while.
Okay.
I, it's obvious that our Board is not going to be taking action on this tonight, but I'd be happy to entertain comment and some perspective from you folks that have been working on it. I also think we have some interested party of the public that are interested in that, and also may have comments. So the only thing that I'd ask you to do, if you're going to make comment, raise your hand and identify yourself. Art, why don't you take it as chairman right now, and take it from there?
Okay, so.
I limit your comments to three minutes or so.
So what I'd like to do is have Luther speak to this, he's been working very hard on it. He knows all the nuts and bolts, so he could speak far deeply and more intelligently than I can on it, so. Uh, so he could, uh, speak far deeply and more intelligently than I can on it. So if we could let Luther speak about it, that'd be great.
Luther, the floor is yours.
Thank you for the time. Uh, Board of Selectmen, uh, very briefly, executive, executive level summary, uh, for this proposal. As outlined by the plan of conservation and development and by every meaningful survey that's been conducted on a townwide basis for some time. Uh, agriculture is a very meaningful sector of the town of Ashford. The state of Connecticut has afforded the town a few different ways to, um, support agriculture from a, um, tax perspective. One of which is, um, uh, state statute requiring a tax abatement for equipment to $100,000 assessed value. The Ashford Agriculture Commission is recommending that the town adopt the optional additional $100,000 value on equipment exemption. The financial impact to the town is nominal at about a $1,500 impact to the grand list, or not to the grand list, I'm sorry, $1,500 net impact to the town, uh, based off the 2020 grand list. So that impact on an individual farmer or individual business basis may be significant, uh, to the town. It's probably slightly less significant. Uh, so the, the Ag Commission thoroughly endorses, uh, expanding of the personal property tax abatement for, um, equipment. Uh, as you'll see detailed in the attachments that were provided by the Ag Commission and sent to, uh, all the members of the Board of Selectmen. Um, the second item that we are recommending action on is modification of language to an existing town ordinance. This was also language that was authorized by Connecticut General Statute. 12 dash 91 for, uh, I'm sorry. I lost my place in my page. Uh, it's actually for, uh, Town Ordinance, uh, 253 dash 3. That is an abatement that is currently held for dairy farms, orchards, and vineyards. The state statute allows this same abatement to be applied to vegetable farms, non-traditional farms, and nurseries, as well as the dairy farms and orchards. And our commission is recommending that adoption. We've provided recommendations for, uh, the language that would be appropriate for, or not necessarily appropriate, uh, but recommended for adoption. Regarding, uh, our recommendations for this, uh, uh, ordinance revision. The concept being that expanding this ordinance to include the, um, vegetable farms, non-traditional farms, and nurseries in addition to the dairies and orchards would be beneficial to agricultural growth, expansion, and sort of, uh, the ability to continue business for farms, uh, in Ashford if they can make a case that they would qualify. So we've provided some sample language that the Board of Selectmen can certainly review and, and reflect upon. And we'd be happy to, uh, provide further input or collaboration as may be appropriate.
Bill, I think you might be muted when you were. I am, thank you. Thanks, Luther. Uh, Catherine, Roger, any questions, Luther?
Uh, one question. What is meant by non-traditional farms?
That's a fine question. Thank you for that. And it's not thoroughly defined by the statute. My expectation is that the burden of proof for being a non-traditional farm would be upon the farm applying. And that the farm applying for a non-traditional farm status for the purpose of this exemption would have to meet the burden of that proof.
I can speak to that a little bit, too. Um, when the statute was written and non-traditional farm was included, it was, it the reasoning was behind it, there may have been farms that weren't thought of at the time. I mean, if you look at now, people are growing mushrooms. That's not a traditional farm, hasn't been in the sense of the word, uh, and things along that line. So again, like Luther said, I would think that it would be burden of proof on someone applying for this exemption, uh, to prove that they are exactly growing, producing something agriculturally, which is, uh, defined by state statute. So, um, so, yeah, trying to nail down non-traditional, we've tried for a while, and it's, it's, it's vague for a reason, was what we were told.
Do we have any sense of how many farms this will actually affect in the immediate future?
That's another great question. Um, when I reached out to our tax assessor, um, there's not a great basis to determine this off of. There are no minimum thresholds for this, uh, ordinance revision, uh, such as there are for the property tax exemption. Uh, there's no minimum required income level. It's, it's at the discretion of both, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. So when this uh, action is applied for by a, a farm in Ashford, the application is submitted to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and voted upon by both. So it's very difficult to try to quantify what farms are either currently in production or what farms are considering production that would qualify them for this, uh, tax abatement.
I mean, just, I mean, I've heard that we're talking about like only a $1,500, $100, uh, impact on our, um, on our budget in terms of.
That's per farm, correct?
Yeah.
Is that per farm?
Or total, I thought.
If, if I can interject, um, because we have two recommendations, let me just clarify. Recommendation number one is the adoption of an additional $100,000 personal property tax exemption for equipment.
Abatement.
Well, it's, it's actually exemption. Um, that one, currently, there is only one farm in the town that is over the current $100,000 exemption. So this, the state mandates the initial $100,000 exemption. The town has the option to adopt a second $100,000 exemption. So currently, um, the 2020 grand list, because at the time of compiling this, the 2021 grand list was not available. There is one farm that is in excess of the initial $100,000 in value. So it's about a $1,500 net impact to the town for our first proposal. The second proposal, which is an expansion of the abatement on the Town Ordinance 253 dash 3, to the fuller extent of what the state law allows. It's very difficult to project what the potential impact may be for that because it's somewhat subjective to who believes they qualify and how they can make that case to the Board of Selectmen and to the Board of Finance. However, you can reasonably assume that people applying for that exemption are likely already pursuing things such as PA 490 and other avenues to mitigate their tax liability to the town for agricultural production. So it's likely that the impact would already be blunted by property owners pursuing steps that may be available to them to offset their current tax burden.
Understood.
Luther, tell me this. I, I, you know, I'm looking at, at one of the pages here that's not numbered, but it's, it's the title of the building is Gotham Greens in Providence, 100,000 square foot building.
I don't believe that's anything I provided.
Okay. It may have been with a letter, but we, we've got several letters, uh, giving input on this thing. And I think one of the, the worries is, is that we have a potential of something that looks like a warehouse going into a major agricultural spance that's open field at the time. And I don't, I don't think that people that I've talked to have the perception of that maintaining the agricultural nature of our community.
Okay, um, because that, um, communication was not made public, uh, prior to the meeting, I, I don't have that available.
We just received it today, Luther, and we will make it a part of the minutes of this meeting.
Okay, so, um, I appreciate that. Um, the so, in the absence of being able to reference the attached documentation directly, if you were to examine the Connecticut State Statute, it's based upon the state definition of agriculture and the state definition of the, um, items therein. And the state definite, definition of agriculture doesn't actually, uh, associate limitation on scale. If that makes any sense.
So you're saying large scale relates to warehouse?
So what I'm saying is that, um, agriculture, um, for either, well, so agriculture uh, for its commercial use, um, which is what this pertains to, uh, does not necessarily, um, there's no sort of, uh, offset for scale. So it's neither rewarded for scale nor punished for scale. So, uh, if it were to be a, uh, for this particular statute, there's no gross revenue threshold. There's no, um, uh, size or scale threshold. So the, the statute does not say if you're a $1,000 per year gross revenue operation, you qualify. And it also does not say if you're a $1 million, uh, per year gross revenue operation, you qualify. It's, it's not based on scale. It's based on merit for qualifying based off of being a farm.
Um, so I don't know anything about the warehouse either, but, um, so you mentioned that it's a warehouse being proposed for a large agricultural piece of land. Um, a warehouse is not agriculture. So it would not fall
That's why I wondered.
Things that we're discussing here, right? The use would change. So we're talking about agriculture as strictly defined. What is agriculture by state statute? And even if you're warehousing agricultural products, I, I, that, you're in a gray area there. So I don't know what the warehouse is. I, I, so if, if it's on agricultural property that's currently getting any sorts of agricultural tax exemptions, I would think that if it's an Amazon warehouse, um, all those things would go away. And none of these tax abatements that, uh, we're discussing here would, would, wouldn't apply. Um, this, these tax abatements for equipment are for tractors and things like that. Um, and the other one is for strictly defined as, uh, vegetable growers, nurseries, and, uh, non-traditional crops. So, uh, so I, I, so we can't get into the weeds of a warehouse because we're not really sure what that is.
Right now that, and, and this will become part, part of the public record, and we can certainly carry this onto our agenda for our next meeting, but it's, it's titled, um, Produce Greenhouse in, in Providence, Rhode Island. But it, it resembles, if you're looking at the snapshots, we, it resembles a huge warehouse. But I, I do understand that you're at a handicap because you don't have in front of you what I've got in front of me. So we'll make that a part of the public record.
So we gotta be careful of our terminology, though. If it's a, if it's a warehouse, it's one thing. If it's a greenhouse and growing crops, different animal. So.
So like if a company, if a company moved in and decided to build greenhouses to make, I don't know, cannabis, how would that, um, that would be a non, obviously a non-traditional agricultural product, um, would those greenhouses be exempt?
Cannabis is strictly regulated by the state and is, is, I don't believe is considered an agricultural crop. It's a whole different animal. However, hemp, which is, doesn't have the THC quantities in it as, as cannabis, uh, is, is, is considered agriculture. But the, and you're talking field crops now. That would be difficult to do in a greenhouse setting.
Also, just to, I'm sorry, just to follow up on Art's statement. So agriculture is not limited to, um, strictly the growing of, right? So, um, agriculture includes the value-added processing of the crops that are grown on the facility, including things that may include packaging, warehousing, and distributing from therein. Again, all of these nuances would have to be captured by an applicant and have to be, um, weighed for their merit by the Board of Selectmen and weighed for their merit by the Board of Finance and ultimately voted upon to see if they qualify for the proposed tax abatements. If that makes sense.
Is, is there anyone else that would like to make any comment or has any questions or input?
Yeah, I think I'd like to say something, uh.
Steve, would you just identify yourself for the record?
My name's Steve Maritko. Um, so as Luther mentioned, uh, the, uh, in, in association with the, uh, third request that, uh, Ag Commission is recommending, it's open-ended. He said, he said scale is not taken into consideration. Uh, so if, yeah, I think they're asking for up to 50% exemption. Um, I'm not sure why the town would, would go for something like that if, if possibly a multimillion dollar, um, exemption uh, or half of that, um, would, would be afforded to whomever might bring something forward. I would think that, that the Board of Selectmen would be wise enough to know that they, they need to use, install some sort of cap on, uh, you know, any sort of abatement. Um, uh, also, um, I'd like to mention that I had asked Kara for who the beneficiaries, uh, the major beneficiaries of, um, the second request, the additional 100,000 would be. I had, uh, she took my email. Um, I had hoped she would send me that information. I, I didn't get it, but I think you should look closely at who exactly would benefit. who exactly would benefit from, even if it's only $1,500. Who would benefit from that? Also take into consideration that, yeah, it might be $1,500 today, but there could be substantial development that would bump that up significantly in the future. So you kind of have to look forward and understand again, who benefits and how, you know, maybe a large corporate entity might benefit in the future. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public of that? Catherine, you?
I was just gonna say that, you know, we've received additional information today. And like you said, it's going to be published with the minutes. And I think that this is something that the selectmen need to explore in more depth to understand the ramifications, talk with the Board of Finance. You know, at first blush, it looks like, you know, a wonderful way to encourage farming in our town, encourage these farms to grow. But we do want to make sure that we don't lose the nature of our town through that by them becoming so big and, and everything that comes with that. So I just think that we need to take a good look at this, look at the other information that we received, look at what the impacts would be on our town. And I don't think we're ready for a decision tonight.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think we've had some, some good discussion here, but I had no intention of entertaining a motion to, for approval of this. A bare minimum, besides making this part of the public documentation is that I would be looking at input, not only from the Board of Finance, but I'd also be consulting with our assessor's office. Probably with planning and zoning and inland wetland and give everybody at least an opportunity to make comment on this, like, like we do on most major ordinances in town. And I would consider this to be potentially have quite an impact, whether you look at it as negative or positive. I think it's our obligation as a Board of Selectmen to take as much input in this as we possibly can. Does anybody have any other comments? Art, Luther?
All I want to say is we just wanted to get this in front of the Board of Selectmen and, and I would consider it mission accomplished.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would second, I would second Art's statement, and I very much appreciate your time. And I'll look forward to reviewing what other documentation may have been provided from the public tonight. And that, you know, agriculture is critically important to the town of Ashford and please do understand that as members of the Ad Commission, we are tasked with advancing and promoting agricultural interests within the town. So when considering the scope of who or this may or may not impact, at the end of the day, this impacts farmers. It's equal opportunity to all farm productions throughout the town as they present based on merit. And we really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And thank you folks for your volunteering for the town. We're always striving to get as many people participating as possible. So thank you again. All right, we're going to move on. Reappointment of municipal open burning official. I had a discussion today with Tom Borman from the Fire Department, and they are recommending the appointment of Andrew Campbell, our existing burning official. And I'm advised by Tom that Andrew has his full certification.
How long is the, how long is the term bill for a burning official?
It's a one-year appointment.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Andrew Camp Campbell as the burning official for the year 2022.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, Chris? Item E, American Rescue Plan. We, we continue as we discussed in our last meeting and looking at different alternatives. We've got somewhat of some mixed opinions about items that are covered versus items that are not covered. I'm consulting with several of the towns locally and, and I don't think we're ready to make any motion on this, but what I'm looking forward to, and we probably should wait till this COVID thing settles down hopefully by the end of the month, but I'm looking forward to calling for a public hearing and getting more public input on this and, and starting to take some action. So anybody else have any comments? Joan, did you want to comment on this at all or? You're muted, Joan.
I see. Thank you, Bill. I just saw in the paper, all their towns have had public hearings. Columbia is one. And Lebanon had a public hearing. Columbia's was in October. Lebanon was in December 13th and Wyndham had a town meeting December 21st. I, I'm just mentioning what I read in the paper. So, and I know with the COVID, we have to be very careful. So that's all. Thank you.
Bill, may I comment?
Yes, of course.
If I understand correctly, the other towns who've had meetings on this so far have had they've really had bigger projects than the ones that we have. For example, we've approved some monies to be used, that needed to be used, you know, we needed the things right away. So we're still, if I understand correctly, Bill, we're still taking in information in the survey that we put out. People can still send their ideas in. That's being compiled. The other thing is, is I see that it looks like Cheryl was able to do our ARPA replace, a revenue replacement calculator. Okay. And it looks like, just from looking at this, that there may, we, we may have some monies, considerable monies that can be used without some of the restrictions of ARPA because of the, what is considered to be a loss of revenue. And I'm not going to get into all the details. It's just something to be mindful of, especially when we're looking at capital improvements. Okay.
I, I agree. I assume you're, you're referring to the audit report that we got last week.
No, I'm looking at the ARPA Revenue Replacement Calculator, and I thought that, I assumed that Cheryl did this up for us.
No, she got that from our auditors.
Okay, good, because I had been trying, we've been, had been working on what this calculation was before. And it does give us a sense of maybe a little more freedom with how we use the monies. Um, that's just a comment. Okay.
We've been looking to reconcile that and try to verify the numbers and figure out the formula they used to it.
Yeah.
Yes, that is a very interesting document.
Yes. And this is what, I can tell you that this is what was recommended by, let's see, Wellington and Mansfield. And a number, there was a meeting of the first selectmen in, I think it was October, October and November about this of let me think where I am here. Actually, no, months ago, there was a meeting of the first select persons in the towns around us. It was coordinated by Mike blanking out on his name. Jeff, what's my, Mike Demato. And Jim, I think Jim Rupert as well. And so they were highly recommending, you know, looking at this calculation for, even for our town. So, so something to keep in mind. I think the number, the number will be a pretty high number. The other thing is we have some things that we put money out for. The assessments of the, our building assessments for town-owned buildings. If the health, safety, engineering, efficiency assessments. So where do those stand at this point in time? Because they had started their work. The contract was signed, the first contract was signed in July, and the second one was, I believe, signed in August. And the second one had to do, I think, with the fire, fire station. So do we have a status update of any kind on that one? Because we already, we've paid them part of the money as of November. I'm just curious as to what progress they're making.
Nothing has crossed my desk. Chris, have you heard anything on that?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything from them. I would suggest a reach out to them.
Inquiry on that, Catherine.
Good. Yeah. Because with that, that's going to give you some ideas. I would think Capital Improvement Committee may want to have the information from that assessment if they get it in time. And you'll also want to look at that when you're looking at how to use the ARPA funds for any improvements to the buildings.
I agree.
And those improvements start with air quality.
I agree. Any other comments regarding that? Roger?
Nope.
Okay, we're going to move on then. Item F, Boards Commission Committee Appointments.
None.
I don't see that we have anything.
No.
Tax refunds.
I have two. Most citing CGS 12-129. Enterprise FM Trust in the amount of $360.67. And Nash Family Farm in the amount of $35.76.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you. I'd like the board to consider adding an item to the agenda called Item H. Discussion and possible recommendation for the purchase of a new truck for Public Works. I will make the motion if, if I, someone will second it for discussion purposes.
I'll make the motion for discussion. Sorry.
And I'll second the motion for discussion. It's really not appropriate for the chair to make the motion.
Well, I, you've said that before, Catherine, and I, I refer you to Robert's Rules of Order on a small board, which we are, and I know traditionally, we try not to do that. We've both worked at that. But that, that is not a hard and fastened rule. It's something that, that we've always tried to attempt, but under Robert's rule, it is not a hard and fast.
Bill, it's not a good argument right now because we've already got a motion and a second.
Joe has come to me with a request that we consider buying a an F-550 dump truck. It happens to be on the lot at Columbia right now, fully outfitted, ready to hit the road. As you're probably aware, there was a request in last year's budget for $70,000 for refurbishment of the fire truck that we're about to take off the line. And that was moved, I know Catherine had worked closely with Joe, that was moved to this year's Capital Improvement Fund, Non-Reoccurring Fund, in the amount of in the amount of $70,000. The truck that we're looking to replace, to quote Joe, does not work during the winter time. It's totally undependable. It's a 2005 pickup truck that primarily by design was to care for our dirt roads. It's a medium-sized truck. His concern with the fire truck that we've talked about adapting to the Highway Department is that that truck is too big to work our dirt roads. And too small to carry the weight to do our regular roads. His concern is that the truck that we've presently got online is just not dependable. We could take delivery of, of this truck for about $67,000. We'd need a new plow, an additional 2,000. So roughly would be about the same money. This is something, of course, that the Board of Finance would have to approve. But I would only go forward with that. I did mention it to them at their last meeting, that I was going to bring it before you folks. We'd need a recommendation from our board. I only bring this because I'm trying to avoid what I potentially see as an emergency coming up. That what our research has also shown was if we do not adapt the, the old fire truck and we plan on going, buying a new truck, because what's going on with delivery of new vehicles right now? We are being told and we, Joe tells me we've had this verified by three different dealers. Once we make the commitment to buy the truck, if that's next year after July 1st, we could plan on a minimum of year delivery from thereafter. And again, looking at it, that we've got a very undependable truck that's actually, it's not being used right now because of its dependability and, and breaking down. I'm afraid that we're going to find ourselves in one heck of a spot, either the end of this winter or even next winter. So I throw it out on the table. I open the floor for discussions. Catherine, I assume you're going to have discussion?
I had already talked with Joe before about this particular problem with the truck. First thing I think we need to do is, I don't think that we voted on adding this to the agenda. So Bill, if it's okay with you, all in favor? Aye.
You're absolutely correct. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
And I'd like, I, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve, no, that we make a recommendation to the Board of Finance to approve using the $70,000 that were set aside, to be set aside for the dump truck. I'm sorry, for the conversion of a fire truck to be used for the purchase of an F-550 dump truck.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Now, with our discussion, with, this was scheduled, the fire truck conversion was scheduled for the upcoming fiscal year, not for this fiscal year, if I recall. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So we're talking about time being of the essence with this thing being available and some potential delays if we delay this further, so to speak, considerable delays in finding another one. How do we propose, when we go to the Board of Finance, what are we doing? Are we asking them to outlay the to make this money available?
We, we would, we would ask them to make it available and we would take off the plan, the 70,000 for next year from, from next year.
So, so the trick to this one is, do we need a town meeting? And I hate to sound like such a nudge, but it is saying that we're going to take monies that were intended for next year and move them into, and basically use those monies this year.
Catherine, I have not talked to council on this, but I think we will, if, if the Board of Finance entertains this, then I think we definitely would need a town meeting.
Okay. And we would want to do that as quickly as possible so as not to lose the deal.
That's correct.
And there's probably something, I don't know if it's a little memorandum of agreement or whatever it is with the people that the F, have the F-550 dump truck. Do they need a down, do they need money put down to reserve it for us? Anything like that?
We have told them that exactly what our process is, they're fairly familiar with it. They have told us if they have a, they've set it aside. But they said that if they have an active buyer, they would give us notice, but at this point, they're just holding it for us. We've also been told, part of the other bad news is that if, we're being told if we wait a year to buy a new truck with the comparable accessories that this one has, it's going it's gonna run us between 85 and 90,000 in the new market.
I totally agree that that would be the case. So just trying to figure out the way to do this quickly and efficiently. I, I am positive that that, the smaller pickup, the 2005 is on its last legs. We already had a problem with it during one of the snowstorms.
It's, it's ongoing.
Yep.
Any more discussion? So the discussion is to make the recommendation to the Board of Finance for the purchase of the F-550 dump truck as displayed. And I'll have all the specs and everything for them. And I'll come up with a narrative for them for their next meeting. I believe their next meeting is on the 27th.
Okay. And we're gonna vote on this right now.
All, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Yep.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Bill, this is one, this is one that, this is one that if in fact, those ARPA funds, if in fact, that calculation on the loss of revenue is, is relatively correct, it's such a big number that it's, even if it's off a little bit, it's not a big deal. If that's the case, I would mention that to the Board of Finance that, because they're gonna be looking at their capital non-recurring and how things are gonna be working with that. So I would make mention of the fact that that may be a possibility to, I don't know whether to use that money from the, I'm gonna call it ARPA funds, or to reconstitute the capital non-recurring in some way.
I, I've gotta say, just for discussion, and, and I agree, Catherine, I believe we've already sent a copy of that, that report to them. But I question the accuracy of the current, Chronicle on a lot of things. But they're claiming that the town of Wyndham purchased a fire truck for police cruisers and I believe a plow truck with ARPA funding under capital improvements, capital expenditures. So I'm, I got a meeting coming up with Jim Rivers because I'm curious to see his narrative on it.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, I'm pretty sure. I'm pretty sure that when they looked at loss of revenue, when you look at loss of revenue, you can use those funds, whatever that loss of revenue was, and it's a very generous calculation that the feds gave us, gave everybody, that if you look at that loss of revenue calculation, that they use that loss of revenue factor when they got those vehicles.
Yeah. No, that will certainly be pointed out to the Board of Finance. All right, folks, anything else? Will we go to the board? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, folks. You have a good night. Stay warm and safe. Good night.
Good night.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye and bye.